All right, now I'm ready. Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of March 26, 2024, and Mr. Sager will lead us in the pledge tonight.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation this evening, we have Reverend Stephen Glab from Resurrection Catholic Church in Woodstock.
And so let us bow our heads and pray. Almighty and ever-living God, as we gather this evening, we look to you for wisdom and guidance in our efforts to serve the community of McHenry County. We ask you to purify our hearts and enlighten our minds that we may exercise our office with sincere motivations and informed perspectives. Do not allow us to violate the trust that the citizens of our community have placed in us. Do not allow the narrowness of prejudice, the lust for political advantage, or the apathy born from insensitivity to prevent us from doing all that is within our power to ensure the well-being of the people whom we govern, regardless of their political disposition or social status. May our choices always place truth above rumor, dialogue above intolerance, excellence above expedience, and the common good over personal success. We look to you, source of grace and mercy, for your abundant blessing as we strive diligently to be faithful to our mission. May our labors this evening be worthy of your glory and the trust given to us by the McHenry County community. Keep us, oh Lord, as the apple of your eye; hide us under the shadow of your wing, renewing us always your Spirit of love. Amen.
Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Althoff. Campbell.
Here.
Gotamaller. Greeno. Hendricks. Kaminsky. Kearns. Kunkel. Meshes. Ness. Reinert. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Wegner.
Here.
Fourteen physically present.
Having a quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Ms. Campbell and Ms. Wegner to attend remotely. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Shorten makes the motion, Mr. Scala seconds. I just want to make a brief note, there was a Scribner's error on the agenda for tonight. Item 13A should be under ordinances, under review for 30-day review, not new and unfinished business. So, all in favor of the agenda, say aye. Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. This brings us to my report to the county board. I'd like to start this evening by thanking County Clerk Joe Tyrrio and his staff for running last Tuesday's primary smoothly and efficiently, and it'll run even smoother this November with the opening of the new election center that will give Joe and his staff a lot more room with which to work. I'd also like to thank every candidate who stepped up to run for office and congratulate those who won the races and will advance to the general election. For those who did not win and still desire to serve, McHenry County has vacancies on numerous boards and commissions to which we appoint. We're looking for applicants to our Community Development and Housing Grant Commission, the McHenry County Conservation District, the Board of Health, and others. If you're interested in checking out vacancies and applying, visit our website at mcHenrycountyil.gov and click on the County Government tab to review our committees. Anything with a green button beside it has a vacancy. Starting at 8:00 AM this Friday, several veterans groups will come together right here in front of the County Administration Building to commemorate Vietnam War Memorial, Vietnam War Veterans Day. March 29th, the official anniversary of the day that the last U.S. combat soldier officially left Vietnam, has been recognized since 2017 to honor the more than 2.7 million American men and women who served in the war. Once again, a debt of gratitude is owed to our very own Lou Ness, Commander of American Legion Post 412 in Woodstock, and Carl Kaminsky, a member of American Legion Post 491 in McHenry, for putting this together. Next week is Community Development Week, and McHenry County is going to start it off in style, not counting the resolution honoring Community Development Week on tonight's agenda. Starting at 3:00 PM Monday, April 1st, I'll be joining the Community Development Department to tour and cut the ribbon on the future site of Taylor Place Apartments in McHenry. Also at the ceremony, we'll be presenting the 2024 Community Development Partner of the Year Award to a very deserving recipient agency. We'd love it if county board members came out to celebrate with us. If you have any questions, please reach out to Director of Public Affairs Alicia Schuler, and she'll be happy to help you. And on behalf of myself and the county board, congratulations to Evan Cochran, a 7th grade student at Emmanuel Lutheran School in Crystal Lake for winning the McHenry County Regional Spelling Bee last Wednesday at McHenry County College. He correctly spelled Cornia to win after 21 rounds, coming out on top of 22 other contestants from McHenry County Elementary and Middle Schools. Evan will represent McHenry County at the Scripps National Spelling Bee at the end of May. And thank you to all the students who competed, and thank you to Regional Superintendent Diana Hartman, MCC, and everyone else who came together to make the annual spelling bee a success once again. And finally, this evening, it's my sad duty to report to the county board that former county board member Donna Schaefer passed away over the weekend. Donna represented the people of McHenry, Richmond, Spring Grove, and northeastern McHenry County for 12 years on this board, between 1988 and 2000. And in 1998, the voters of McHenry Township elected her as Township Supervisor as well, where she served for 16 years. She retired in 2014 to spend more time with her family, but she still had public service in her blood. She was subsequently appointed by the county board to serve a term on the McHenry Township Fire Protection District. She was subsequently appointed by the district's trustees to serve as Chairwoman of its Board of Fire Commissioners, a role she held at the time of her passing. So I'd like to end my report this evening with a moment of silence in Donna's memory. Thank you. Next, we have members' comments. Do any members wish to make comment this evening? Ms. Ness.
At the Committee of the Whole last week, the proclamation in front of us honoring Women's History Month was put before this body. This county board has a process. It's very clear. We discuss issues at the Committee of the Whole, and we vote on them the following week. It was decided by the chairman, no offense intended, Mr. Chairman, to drop the offending words in the proclamation and bring the amended version without the words diversity, inclusion, and equity before this body for a vote. To me, this is a departure of board norms. At tonight's meeting, an amendment to the proclamation could have been brought forward with an opportunity for discussion and vote. That is the way we conduct business on this board. I understand that five members took issue with the words, which I find hopeful, encouraging, and visionary. What we really have here is a difference of opinion. But if anything is to be disturbing to me, it would be this: that a fellow board member used words to accuse another fellow board member for promoting, and I quote, "identity politics steeped in Nazi and communist far-left dogma." Frankly, those words are way more alarming to me than diversity, inclusion, and equity. I will not be voting for this proclamation. I really feel like this proclamation is a disgrace to the women in McHenry County. Thank you.
Ms. Wegner.
Thank you. Since it's Women's History Month, and we have the proclamation on the agenda, I want to give a little background on the organization that created Women's History Month. The National Women's History Alliance, founded in 1980 as a nonprofit educational organization, is committed to ensuring women's history becomes mainstream. The NWHA has a nationwide presence as the number-one resource for information and educational material about the roles of women in American history. It picks a theme every year with a positive message of inclusion for all people and encourages us to honor local women who have made an impact on our community. Recognizing the dignity and accomplishments of women in our own families and those from other backgrounds higher self-esteem among girls and greater respect among boys and men. We draw strength and inspiration from those who came before us and those remarkable women working among us today. They are part of our story, and a truly balanced and inclusive history recognizes how important women have always been in American society. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, I wanted to talk about the Lakewood Road Project Open House. I want to thank the Division of Transportation staff for a very professional and informative evening last Wednesday at the Lake in the Hills Village Hall, where they held an open house detailing the Lakewood Road Improvements project. This project is entering Phase 2 engineering, and staff did an excellent job of detailing next steps through projected completion with graphics, maps, renderers, and detailed discussions with very engaged residents. Special thanks to project manager Rebecca Braises and the other staff members who were there to talk with residents and address questions and concerns. There were an estimated 68-plus people in attendance, far exceeding their expectations. One key takeaway was the overwhelming number of residents who were extremely pleased with the addition of bike paths along both sides of the roads. I think there's much anticipation with that in project improvements. My next comment relates to the Lakewood Speed Reduction Ordinance, and I'm only bringing it up now rather than later because during the open house for Lakewood Road, speed became a common theme for many of the residents in attendance, either expressing their desire to see speeds reduced or the concern that cars are driving too fast on Lakewood Road. I also want to share that I have received several emails from residents expressing their support of the speed reduction ordinance. These include Bill Wayne, whose email was also sent to Member Hendricks and Chairman Bueller on March 17; additional emails from Robert DeFrank on March 22; Marilyn DeFrank on March 23; Pat Mall on March 23; Bill Mall on March 24. All of these are residents of Lakewood who live near and travel Lakewood Road either daily or frequently. These emails were also received. I've been pretty ill since last Thursday, and I have not gotten around to passing emails along. I'm happy to do so, but in the meantime, I have read their names and dates of receipt into the record. I have spoken to two individuals who expressed concern that a lower speed limit would lengthen their travel times to and from work. While my concern is safety, I did wonder what the impact would be. Doing the calculations, the stretch of Lakewood in question, Ackman to Algonquin, is two miles. Two miles at 45 miles per hour would take 2 minutes and 40 seconds, assuming no other issues. Two miles at 40 miles per hour or five miles slower would take three minutes. So we're talking about 2 seconds slower, 20 seconds slower, I'm sorry, excuse me. There are a number of factors that can cause significant delays when traveling, but a 5 mile per hour reduction is not one of them. I continue to advocate and support this speed reduction for safety of residents, pedestrians, and drivers in the area. And I do have one final comment, so thank you for bearing with me. This evening, we will be voting on a proclamation recognizing Women's History Month. The proclamation before us, as we've said this evening, is different from the one presented at the COW. This version removes language that, in essence, to me, reflects the concept that we value the input of a broad spectrum of our population without bias or favoritism, a value that I would think we would all get behind. It's hard to comprehend why this is an issue at all. That completes my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Sager.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My comments are not nearly as profound or educational as our previous colleagues have indicated, but I just want to say sincere thanks to all of those involved with the referendum for funding the Mental Health Board and its service agencies. Certainly, our thanks go out to that board for providing the educational background to all the members of the various service agencies and their clientele, and to our own staff for creating and forwarding for public information, the FAQs, as well as all who support it. I think that that puts McHenry County in a very strong position to continue to uphold and support mental health and its unique aspects across the board for our residents. And so I want to thank everyone, and I look forward to some very, very positive programming as we continue down the road in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hoff.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I wanted to make a comment also about the Women's History Proclamation. There is a paragraph that has been deleted from the proclamation that you will hear tonight. I think it's important that you hear what that paragraph is. And also to remind everyone here, including, you know, our members and our audience, that diversity is a part of McHenry County's strategic plan. So the paragraph that was removed refers to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I would like to read that paragraph to you. Whereas our American history is rich with amazing stories of strong, courageous, and brilliant women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have made contributions, excuse me, historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation's in countless ways. That is the paragraph. Thank you.
That's not the paragraph, but...
That's not the paragraph?
That's not the paragraph.
Which paragraph is it? That paragraph's in here? Which paragraph is it? Where is it? I have the new one. I don't have the old one, but I'm looking at it on here. The old one is here. Is this one?
No, you don't have it.
Are you sure? Well, okay. I thought I had it because it did mention race and races. Okay, so we don't have the, we don't have the old one in front of me. The old one was at the COW, and we read it last time, so it does refer to diversity. And that was the only paragraph that was deleted. That is on record at the COW from the last meeting. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, we'll proceed to item nine on our agenda, Special Recognition. I will entertain a motion to approve the proclamation declaring April 1 through 5, 2024 as Community Development Week in McHenry County. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Smith seconds, and Ms. Ness will read the proclamation.
This is so cool to be able to do this. I shared with the chairman earlier that I was appointed to the very first CDBG Commission that this county had after we received our entitlement designation from HUD, so this is, this is great. Proclamation declaring April 1st through 5th, 2024 as Community Development Week in McHenry County. Whereas through bipartisan legislation Congress passed and President Gerald Ford signed into law the National Community Development Act of 1974. And whereas the National Community Development Association is a nonprofit organization that represents cities and counties that administer U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD funding across the United States. And whereas this HUD funding includes the Community Development Block Grant Program, known as CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, HOM, and the Continuum of Care Funding, COC, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, ESG. And whereas the National Community Development Association initiated National Community Development Week in 1986 to give local attention to the numerous outstanding projects and accomplishments occurring nationwide through these HUD programs. And whereas these projects assist local governments in achieving high-quality, locally-responsive programs for making communities better places in which to live, particularly for low- and moderate-income people. And whereas McHenry County is a grantee of CDBG, COC, and HOM funding and acts as the collaborative applicant for ESG funding. And whereas McHenry County is also grantee of the United States Department of the Treasury, assisting local residents by preventing homelessness. And whereas the Community Development Division locally administers the Senior Services Grant Program and the LED Safe Home Program. And whereas the Community Development Division is responsible for administering over $50 million in grant funding in its current five-year plan, working with the community to select well-qualified projects that provide substantial benefits to the residents of McHenry County, thereby creating an enriched and vibrant community. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the County Board of McHenry County, Illinois, that April 1st through 5th, 2024 is hereby proclaimed to be Community Development Week in McHenry County. And be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the National Community Development Association, to the county administrator, to the community development administrator, and that it is spread upon the records of the McHenry County Board dated at Woodstock this 26th day of March, 2024.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation honoring Women's History Month, March 2024. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Ms. Althoff seconds, and Ms. Althoff will read the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Proclamation honoring Women's History Month, March 2024. Whereas our American history is rich with amazing stories of strong, courageous, and brilliant women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home and have played a unique role by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions and have served our country courageously in the military, and because of these important achievements, women in American history should be remembered, honored, and celebrated. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements which create a more fair and just society for all. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the McHenry County Board that March is designated as Women's History Month, encouraging the people of McHenry County to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And be it further proclaimed that this county board is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the county administrator, the county board chair, and the director of human resources, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 26th day of March, AD 2024.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing March 19th, 2024 as National Agriculture Day in McHenry County. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Shorten seconds, and Ms. Von Bergen will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. Proclamation recognizing March 19th, 2024 as National Agriculture Day in McHenry County. Whereas Illinois accounts for 70,700 farms, which equates to 26,300,000 acres. And whereas 96% of family farms are owned within Illinois. And whereas the total value of crops in 2022 was 281 billion, up 45% from 2017. For livestock, the value was 262 billion, up 35% from 2017. And whereas the American farmer represents one of the oldest professions in our country. The farmer has evolved to embrace new technologies that protect our soil, water, and air. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the County Board of McHenry County, Illinois, that on National Agriculture Day, McHenry County recognizes the significant impact agriculture plays within the counties, states, and our country. Agriculture is Illinois's number-one industry and employs citizens across this state. From farm fields to urban farms and to the manufacturing of food and fiber, agriculture is essential to the daily lives of American citizens. And be it further proclaimed that the county board recognizes March 19th, 2024 as National Agriculture Day and calls on our citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions farmers and farm families have made to better the lives of our citizens. And be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to spread a copy of this proclamation upon the records of McHenry County, of this proclamation upon the records of McHenry County, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 26th day of March 2024.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation honoring Chief Assessment Officer Robert Ross. Mr. Scola makes the motion, Ms. Von Bergen seconds. We read the proclamation to Mr. Ross in, at the COW on the 14th. So we'll formalize it with a vote tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Ms. Van Hoff, did you have something you wanted to...
Yes, yes. Please indulge me. I found the paragraph that was left out, and I would like to read that now, if that's okay.
Okay. We will proceed to zoning petitions. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the zoning consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda. Mr. Scola makes the motion, Mr. Gotemaller seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please?
Voting's open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Ms. Campbell, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment. Just a reminder that public comments are limited to three minutes, at which time the red light will come on in front of me, and you'll be asked to summarize your comments if you have not yet completed them. First up will be Mr. David Cook.
Understanding that Springfield climate advocates are dogmatically promoting the latest wave of solar farm petitions, it is imperative to ensure against risk. Some solar farm petitioners have admittedly been in business for relatively few years and are supplied with offshore components. They cite their latest studies but have no idea how foreign-made materials will erode over time. They have no idea how decomposing chemicals, adhesives, and agents will interact with our soil, watershed, or pre-existing aflatoxins within the soil. We only know that these petitioners will not be here to breathe the air nor drink the water. Given the petitioners' testified confidence in their solar projects, we might ask some legal assurance from them beyond performance bonds. Petitioners and landowners alike should be required to provide hold harmless agreements to McHenry County officials, as well as some form of environmental catastrophe insurance with McHenry County specified as an additional named insured. Local taxpayers dependent on county government for services and protection do not want county governments subject to environmental disaster claims. Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Chris McKay, is it? McKee?
I'm Chris McKee, and I'm McHenry County Farm Bureau President. I'd like to thank you guys for recognizing Ag Day and the contributions that agriculture make to the county and the state and country. We also really appreciate the working relationship we have with the county and many of its departments. So thank you.
Okay, as I stated before, new and unfinished business, 13A should be under, for review under ordinances, so we'll proceed to appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment to the Sheriff's Merit Commission and Ethics Commission as of March 26, 2024. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Ms. Ness seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Ms. Campbell, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
And Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for reappointment to the McHenry County Public Transportation Advisory Committee as of March 26, 2024. Mr. Scola makes the motion, Mr. Shorten seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you please open the voting?
Voting's open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Are you disconnected? Stuart, hold on.
Ms. Campbell, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
And Mr. Scola.
Next, we'll move on to item 15 on our agenda. Do any standing committee chairs have, or liaisons have updates for us tonight? Mr. Gotemaller?
Yes, Mr. Hartman talked about this a little bit at the COW, but the space report or the space planning, it's, I think, important to note what's been going on with that. The first plan that was made by this county was actually in 2008. It planned for the fact that they anticipated having 450,000 people here, plus or minus a few, by 2025, which would be next year. We're only about 125,000 short. We, we worked on it again in 2016, and they looked at it, and they came out with a different plan at that point in time. If we haven't, if anybody hasn't noticed, we had COVID in the last few years, and a significant part of our workforce is now working from home. And a significant part of virtually all the workforce is working from home. So there's been some requests now from different departments about changing space and expanding space and what have you. And we fully anticipate that we're going to need to redo this plan to account for the way things are, the way things have changed since the last time they were around. It hasn't come forward for a vote yet, but we do expect that that's going to... I mean, I, I look at it as just one example, is the court system. At one point in time, the court system, you could go there on the, at the nine o'clock court call, and you would see 10 to 20 lawyers in every single courtroom. Today, you'll see 10 or 20 people on the Zoom meeting, but you might see one or two people in the courtroom. So to me, it looks like there may be a scheduling problem, not necessarily a space problem, because we're not using the buildings the way they were designed 20 years ago or 30 years ago. So at any rate, I, I just wanted to let the board know that that's coming, and we're going to have to take a look at what we do with that in the next year.
Thank you. Ms. Von Bergen?
Thank you. As Chair of CDHG Commission, my report builds on the proclamation read earlier by Member Ness. On March 12 and 13, the CDHG met to hear presentations and allocate almost $1.4 million for the Community Development Block Program. The CDBG is a federal grant that allows governments to craft locally-driven solutions to address urgent and important community development needs. With over $2.6 million in requests, our goal was to try and fully fund as many projects as possible to ensure the success and completion of each project. I want to thank staff and those on the commission for their time and commitment. Deliberations were difficult with so many worthy projects, but the commission was able to recommend full funding of projects for Family Health Partnership Clinic, which will provide medications for uninsured, Habitat for Humanity for critical home repairs to seniors, veterans, and families at risk of homelessness, the City of Woodstock's Olson Park Project, and the last phase of the Village of Hebron's Water System Improvement Project. The commission was also able to partially fund many other projects, and you should see a, a resolution come before you at the next county board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. So first, it's on the Northwest Water Planning Alliance, which they only need about three times a year, and last year they had to cancel one, so I don't really come forward with this very often. But the, the Northwest Water Planning Alliance is in the process of developing their water supply sustainability plan, which is a multi-year planning process which began back in January of 2023, with a final planned adoption planned for by December of 2024. On the third phase out of four major phases in this planning process. Phase one was vision and goal development. Phase two was strategy prioritization. And this phase three, which we're going into now, is strategy implementation. It states that the Northwest Water Planning Alliance Water Supply Sustainability Plan will serve as a roadmap for members seeking to take voluntary steps toward feasible and effective long-term use of water supply resources. The water sustainability goals are focused on the Fox River, Lake Michigan, sandstone aquifers, and shallow aquifers. The next meeting for this group is Thursday, March 28. We'll be reviewing the different approaches for the implementation of the water sustainability plan, and we'll also hear a report from the Technical Advisory Committee, which really is the backbone of this plan. They provide critical expertise and structure in the development of the plan. Just briefly, I'd like to explain, because I don't know that people are that familiar with NWPA. It was established in 2010 by groundwater-dependent communities in northeastern Illinois. The geography of NWPA is roughly coincident with, but not limited to, the Fox River Basin, and includes communities in Lake McHenry, Kane, Kendall, and DeKalb Counties. Really, their focus is formed by intergovernmental agreement, is to collaboratively plan for and steward our shared river and groundwater resources to ensure a sustainable water supply for the people, economy, environment, and future generations. The future vision that the NWPA area will have a dependable supply of water for generations to come. The other liaison report I'd like to submit is the 2050 Regional Plan Commission update. The RPC is beginning to see the light at the end of a very long tunnel, and now have in their possession all of the draft chapters of the 2050 Plan. They are currently reviewing those chapters and will continue that process at their next meeting, which is scheduled for this Thursday, March 28, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Admin Building. These are public meetings, and everyone is welcome to attend. I don't want to speak on behalf of the commissioners, but it does seem clear that everyone is very pleased to have gotten to this point, and they are all working very hard to provide final comments and edits before bringing the final draft document forward for public review in April. And I do want, I'm not a liaison to the Mental Health Board, but I do want to thank Member Sager for calling out the hard work of the Social Servants Agency members, for getting the word out about the sales tax referendum and helping to educate the public. They did a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
A couple meetings this week. I know with the Easter week and, and school spring break, we might have some low attendance, but we have a Stormwater Commission meeting on Thursday morning at 8:30 here in Conference Room C. And if, I hope our members can make it. I know there's several people who are not going to be there this week, so lack of a quorum. We're trying to do elections, and we have a couple appointments to make on Thursday. So if you guys can be there, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further reports, we'll move on to item number 16. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the routine consent agenda? Seeing none, I will just note that, Ms. Wagner, I believe you needed to abstain from 16B22, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Mr. Gotemaller seconds. Clerk? Oh, Mr. Sager.
Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to comment, and I just want to say something quickly about 16B26, and that is Resoluton Authorizing the Ordinance for the McHenry County Conservation District 2025 Fiscal Year Budget as provided for in the Public Act. I, I want to say quickly sincere thanks and commendation to the Board of Trustees, to the professional staff, and the leadership of the Conservation District, and certainly to the numerous volunteers which they have. Not only do they do outstanding programming, not only do they do absolutely wonderful stewardship of the properties over which they have oversight, but additionally, they have done a Yoma's job, I think, in terms of bringing the district into a very, very solid financial position. For those of you who do not know, they are going to be able to basically pay off their bond debt this coming year in 2026, which is a really significant accomplishment. And so I just want to extend, again, sincere thanks and commendation to all. Thank you.
Clerk, could you open the voting, please?
Voting's open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Ms. Campbell, how would you like to be shown?
Yes, please.
And Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to ordinances. We have one up for action tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17B1, see ordinance adopting the establishment in altered speed zone on county highways. Mr. Kearns makes the motion, Mr. Sager seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm looking for it here. I just want to reiterate what I said last, or at the committee of the whole meeting, and what Ms. Campbell said, is that there have been many people who live directly adjacent to Lakewood Road in the neighborhoods, especially those with families who would like the speed limit to be reduced from 45 to 40. I do understand that it might slow down traffic a little bit, but I think it's important that we make sure that the families and the children and the people are, are safe. So I would, I will be a yes vote on this reduction of speed limit. Thank you.
Okay, see no further comment. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Ms. Campbell, how would you like to be shown?
Yes, please, thank you.
And Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
I have a real quick, um, Ms. Michelle's not available. We would be nice, but she didn't tell me. We've communicated, and they are going to cancel next week's Valley High Operating Committee, so if you get that on your calendar, you can remove it. Uh, what else did I have here? Alicia's just finished updating your strategic plan report card, so you can take a look at that tonight when you go home. And that's right, and we try to hold ourselves accountable and make sure we're making progress there. On a personal note, I'm going to have my self-evaluation in front of the Administrative Services Committee next Wednesday. In that evaluation, I try and do some forward thinking and thinking about goals for my position for the next 12 months from that, you know, May to May kind of timeframe. So if you've got ideas, things that you think should be on my goal list, let me know. What Chairman Gotemaller know in the coming month, and we'll try and get that ready for formal adoption in May. Then finally, I'd just remind you that you have information and gifts in a bag in the other room from our friends at the Farm Bureau, so please take that home before I head home tonight. I can't make sure, I can't guarantee it'll be here all week, so. All right, thank you.
There's some pretty good beef sticks in there. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scola makes the motion, Ms. Althoff seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Have a good night.